This is the regular meeting of the planning board, those that have given in accordance with the open colored meeting staff. Our board of commissioners for both of your municipal buildings, found a set copy of the oral clerk and official oral publication. First I call the board, this is Fordham.
Here.
Fields.
Here.
Egerton.
Here.
Mahocha.
Here.
Councilperson Morris.
Here.
Robert Carr.
Here.
Groll.
Here.
Siegel is absent. Tarana?
Here.
Murphy is absent. The chair.
Here.
Chair, you have a corner and all members present and work at stake. Great, thank you very much, appreciate you coming. This first order of business would be the minutes.
We wrote them, but they didn't get into the packet, so what I felt was they're rather long, rather than have the board read them and place. After the next meeting. And I'll make sure it's in the mail.
Very well. Okay. So the first order then is really new business, minor subdivision, 437 Ridgewood Avenue.
This is a minor subdivision application number 437 Placeta Avenue. The applicant would move their previous application. This is a new or fresh application, so the prior application, the applicant has to start, is starting.
Good evening, everyone, my name is Mr. Owen, and I represent the applicant, Wayne O'Leary. This is a new application for minor subdivision for both of subdivide and subject property. It's two lots with each new lot having frontage on Ridgewood Avenue. The existing one-family dwelling in this application is to be removed. A new one-family dwelling is to be constructed in the future on each of the two new lots. And the minor subdivision in this application meets all the requirements of the zoning ordinance, including those requirements for lot area, lot width, lot depth, all setback requirements, building height requirements, building area requirements. The minor subdivision also complies with all of the requirements of the subdivision ordinance. And it provides some required flat and map details that are on the minor subdivision map that you have in front of you. As a result, the minor subdivision does not require any variances or any relief at all. It's what's called a fully conforming minor subdivision, and it is entitled to approval. We of course recognize and agree to certain conditions of approval. First of all, Glen Ridge Historic Preservation Commission approvals for demolition and for new construction. Second, submission of grading and drainage plans as well as building plans prior to the issuance of the building permits. And finally, naturally, compliance with all applicable building codes. So with that said, I'm ready to proceed with what is hopefully one witness. Let me ask first, Mr. Zekely, do you have the exhibit's pre-marked?
I, yes, yes, yes.
I think we should mark the application, first of all, as exhibit A1. If that's agreeable, I think we should mark second, it is A2, the property survey, which was prepared by Lake Land Survey. And the application, A1, is dated January 26, 2015. The property survey, A2, is dated May 8, 2014. Next, I believe we should mark as A3, the minor subdivision plan, which is the new plan for you, prepared by Anderson Consulting Services, and that's dated January 23, 2015. And I believe at this point last, you should just mark your memo. Michael Zekely's memo dated November 6, 2015, and that takes us up to A4. I'd like to call Paul Anderson.
Mr. Anderson, are you ready to write hand, to affirm to tell the truth in the matters pending before this board?
I do.
Would you state your names, business and address?
Paul W. Anderson, A&amp;D R, SLS, 40 Miller Drive, New Jersey.
Okay, you're, you're, of course, as a civil engineer and planner?
That's correct.
Well, Paul, if this is a new application, I believe we should again very briefly have you summarize this board, your credentials and qualifications.
I've graduated science and civil environmental engineering from varsity at University of New Jersey. Life professional planner in the state of New Jersey, and also licensed engineer in the state of New Jersey. Justified for many boards, including this one last month, as an expert witness in both planning and engineering.
So I offer, Mr. Anderson, that as an expert in professional engineering and also to the extent required tonight, in professional planning.
Just, if I could, just one question for the witness. Have you ever prepared a minor subdivision plan?
Yes.
How many have you prepared in the past?
Uh, since the last, in the last year, probably three. I, I've been going back forever now, I'm just trying.
Okay, thank you.
And I just had one question, when, when were you licensed as a professional engineer?
1987.
And have you been licensed continuously since then?
I have.
Okay, thank you. I'd like you to begin by first describing the existing conditions that are in the property.
The subject property is a lot, 16 lot 52, 437 Ridgewood Avenue, located in the 01 zone. We have map, because it agrees to my right. It's apparently a large lot for the 01 zone. It has 32,703 square feet, and has 204.25 linear feet of road front. The, and has a one single house located to the left side here, which is planning on being removed.
Okay, and then there's some associated improvements with that house, the driveway and the like.
The driveway inside.
Oh, that's also proposed to be removed, disabled on the plan.
That's correct.
All right, Jeff, would you please describe the proposed minor subdivision in this application?
Which is primarily the, of course, to the right, which is the minor subdivision. We're providing a lot only exactly in half. It required to have 850 square feet of lot area within the first hundred feet. The lot on the left, which is the 01 lot, is 9,400 and Kirby Mountain's curb feet. And the lot on the right, 5202, is 9,376 square feet.
Yeah, for your line, what you're doing now is that you're taking all of the requirements of the zoning ordinance that you have put into a chart, which you can see in the lower right area of your minor subdivision plan. It's labeled scheduled of area yard and building requirements, and you just highlighted that in your, your mark. What you're doing now, you're going to have all of the requirements of zoning ordinance to explain. What is required and the worst proposal to be included on the left, there's a.
That is correct.
Okay, please proceed.
All right, the next one on my list is along with 85 feet is required in the zone. On 5201, we have 98.7 feet, and that's measured at the one, at the front, setback line. And 5202, we have 99 feet. Uh, the next is lot depth. We have requirement of 125 feet, and each of these lots has 200 feet of lot depth. The next is the front yard. We did, uh, we had the surveyors do a computation by surveying locating each of our houses in the neighborhood, and they came up with an average lot setback of 60.17 feet. That becomes the requirement of this zone, uh, in this, in this street. And we are proposing in each case, a setback that exceeds 60.17 feet. Uh, we have obviously not shown a house at this point, so what we're saying is we commit to have it conform with our setback, whatever that, yeah, what this number is.
Could you just follow up on the front yard setback? Uh, you actually asked a land surveyor to go out there and measure what the setbacks are, is that how it goes?
That is correct.
Is that on both sides of the existing dwelling, across the entire block front inch of the street?
It's the closest point on, on, from each dwelling on this side of the street, in that lot.
Okay, and then what the surveyor does is gets those distances and then averages them and creates what is the required front yard setback, is that correct?
That is correct.
Uh, do you have a map that shows the calculation prepared by the surveyor in this case?
I do.
Perhaps we should mark that as part of the record, and my notes reflect that would be exhibit A5. That's also a map prepared by Lake Land Survey, and that has a revision date of December 17, 2014, is that correct?
Yes, that is correct.
And again, the average front yard setback is 60.17.
Correct, this is the subject property to the right side of this plant here. And these are the other properties within the block. It shows the front of each house, and it shows the location of the front of the nearest point to the property line. And what they simply did is they did all of these, they added them up, divided by the total number, to get the average.
And that average is reflected in the little square in the center of the exhibit, correct?
That's correct, in fact, they have all of them listed right here, the average, and the average of the bottom.
And so I understand your testimony, each of the two new lots that propose front yard setback will comply with or exceed that average.
That's correct.
Okay, would you please continue with the zoning survey, if you were the side yard?
I was side yard, uh, the two side yards, one being 10 feet on one side, and we will exceed that in both cases. And the opposite side yard would have to be a minimum of six, and we would exceed the six, what's that guy?
Okay, um, we also have a rear yard requirement.
We do, rear yard is part of the 25 feet in, in both, we would exceed 25.
And the final zoning ordinance requirements for the tank, the building height and building area, which we explained are required, whether the proposed subdivision requires.
The building height required is a maximum 35 feet, and then we would commit to being less than 35 feet for each of the proposed dwellings. And the final one is the maximum building area, you're sitting in the zone, you're permitted up to 20% of building area coverage, and we would be less than 20%.
Okay, now some summary questions. Does this minor subdivision comply with all the requirements of the zoning ordinance?
Yes, it does.
And does it also comply with the requirements of the subdivision ordinance?
Yes, it does.
Does it require any variances?
It, no, it does not.
Okay, and is it fully conforming with all the ordinance requirements?
Yes, it is.
I have no further questions for this witness.
I don't know, it's a little, it's a little question. Did you appear before the HPC to take this new construction then?
I, that's, that's not a question for you.
Not for, well, I don't.
That would be maybe more.
Uh, we did not do this particular application, as I indicated at the outset, however, we would make that a condition of approval. We need to appear before the HPC to get permission to remove the existing structure, and also to get approval of the new construction permit. So we understand that that's a process that we need to go through, would be explicit condition of this approval. Right now, we're here just for the subdivision, just meeting these ordinance that are in front of us and putting the line down, but it would again be subject to that and the other things not actually to be.
Just to elaborate on that, um, if the board will approve this application, the approval would have to be conditioned upon the existing structure being demolished, and in order for it to be demolished, they first have to appear before the HPC and obtain the HPC's approval for the existing option to be demolished. That would be a condition of approval, so if for some reason, uh, the house is not demolished or HPC doesn't approve the demolition of the house, then the subdivision approval, if it were to be granted by the board, would potentially be in effect without the house being demolished.
Can I ask you another question? Are we essentially putting a cart before the boards, because the reason I ask is because I, I mean, maybe I was speaking out of turn, but we're in historic district, this home isn't a historic district, I didn't think you could level a home in a historic district and completely get rid of a house in historic district at all.
Uh, I can address that, or Mr. Trendy likes to.
You can, but it requires HPC approval.
Correct.
Now, if HPC doesn't approve demolition, you know, what would decide tonight is what could happen if they can't do it?
Is it correct that without HPC approval, this application would not comply with town rules and regulations?
No, this application complies with town rules and regulations, but to, to take it further, we need a separate approval from a separate body to remove the house.
But if the house remained, you couldn't make this application, could you?
So I, I think I understand what you're saying, I think that's what Mr. Trendy likes to say. If for any reason the HPC said, you can't remove the house, just hypothetically said, then we would not get permission to go out and record this subdivision, so the line would never go down.
I guess what Ms. Fields' question was, is why don't you get that permission and then come back to board the board?
Because your rules and regulations allow us to apply to this board first, and to get the HPC approval as a subsequent approval as a condition of this approval. And it's very clear in Title 15 of your ordinance.
That they allow them, or that?
That's correct, yeah, and they allow this application to be made to this board, the planning board, or if it was one that had to be made to the board of adjustment, the matter is then referred to the HPC, and the HPC acts on it. And the, and Title 15 is very clear that we're following the procedures outlined there.
And I guess this might be a question for Alan, and it goes, I guess, as to the, to the timing of this application. This is considered a new application, so it would fall within that 120-day timeframe, I guess. So to the extent that there is HPC approval required, or if there are any other conditions that may be raised, would those need to be satisfied within those 120 days, and if not?
The 120 days doesn't apply anymore, because this is a brand-new application, there's no variance. What allowed the 120 days or less time was the variance. This application is on for your decision, I believe it's 45 days, and the date is deemed complete, and it's a slightly different timeframe, I'll let you address that further.
Right, but we're, the time period we're referring to, Councilwoman, is the time that the board has to act on the application.
Right.
And with the prior application, which may have required a variance, and assuming it did, the statute required, allows for 120 days to be remised.
That's what we talked about at the last meeting.
I think, I think it's 120. But this new application, which does not require any variances, and is simply a subdivision application, the time period for this board to act is 45 days. Now, that means the board to act on the application, now the approval is conditioned upon HPC or any other conditions. There's no, no clock ticking on, on when those conditions have to be satisfied.
So would it be considered an open application, such that if it took, hypothetically speaking, a year or more for HPC to approve the demolition, would this still be considered, I guess for purposes of any subsequent zoning changes, would this still be considered part of that initial application?
For a period of two years, if the application is approved conditionally or unconditionally, then by state statute, then the approval, I hesitate to use the word valid, but it's immune from any zoning changes for a period of two years, from the date of the approval. And that, that time period can be extended by the board after requesting the opt, but it's a two-year protection period once the approval is granted.
And just one follow-up question for you, Alan.
Sure.
Um, in terms of whether the applicant has standing, did you, do you agree with council's position that Title 15 enables them to come before our board prior to seeking?
Yes, where there's multiple approvals such as this, there's not a requirement that you have to go to HPC first and then come here, or vice versa, and then the option of coming here first, or HPC again. In order for this plan to proceed as presented, they're going to need the approvals of both this board and the HPC. And without both of those approvals, then the, the subdivision would not be implemented, or would be effective.
So we could put in, to the extent we make a decision tonight, we could put in language that should HPC deny the application to demolish, that our conditional approval immediately becomes, would it become moot or expunged? Uh, we should have some type of language for the records, just that it's not hanging out there.
I understand. And, yeah, I think it kind of, this sort of relates to Mr. Morris's question. I mean, the house is there now, and they could not subdivide the property given the location of the existing house. So they indicated they are going to demolish the house, and then draw, want to draw the subdivision line, which requires a sort of approval.
I mean, if the Title 15 does allow them the option of going to either board in whatever order they choose, I guess so be it. But it does seem to me that we ought to know that, what the HPC thinks of the demolition in order to properly decide whether this is a valid subdivision.
On that note, if HPC decides that they can, maybe they'll say not demolish the entire property, but a portion of the property, the existing property, does this now then become null and void if this is approved because it's saying the entire building is to be come demolished? I mean, the language of this says the entire building. And if HPC says, well, we don't want you to get rid of the entire structure, you can get rid of part of the structure, but you'd still be able to subdivide the property in the fashion that you want to subdivide it, does it have to come back to them till reapproval or no?
I, I understand your questions, and this suggests that I think they're a little premature, because we need to go to the HPC. Our effort is to go there and get an approval to remove the house completely. If something like your positive comes back, then I think it's a little different. But in terms of your feeling like you want to be protected, I think that your questions and Mr. Trendy likes answers should make you feel that. This is clearly conditioned upon our getting the approvals that we need. If we don't get them, the subdivision line does not go down. That means I don't go down to the Essex County Recorder's office and report a deal. I need to have the HPC approvals that we're seeking, and once I get them and that condition is satisfied, then we go forward.
I'd like to just add that we need to be focused on the application, as I said last time also. And I think we're getting into a lot of things, which, only one thing is important, it will be whatever we do today, and if we approve it, it will be conditional that HPC has to approve the demo. And that's all, there can be so many hypothetical scenarios we can create, but we are not looking at that. We are looking at the zoning requirements of the, and the current ordinance. And I think that's what we should be discussing, is if, does the application meet those requirements or not?
And just to sort of answer Ms. Fields' question, the, if this were to reapprove, it would be, it would be this plan that the board would be approving, which calls for the complete demolition of the house. And the condition that would be included in the resolution would require the demolition of the house as proposed by this plan. So that if HPC somehow said, you know, they're only approving partial demolition, um, then this, then they would probably have to come back to this board, and, and then this board would have to look at it again and see whether somebody's subdivision, zoning, or any of those requirements.
More questions from the board?
I have another one. Are there any potential environmental issues that would impact or affect a zoning decision?
Uh, well, the simple answer is no, it's really not within the jurisdiction of the board. And I should note that, um, Mr. Zekely received a letter from a neighbor mentioning the fact that there is an underground oil tank on the property, which, as I understand it, is in the process of being removed. Uh, now that letter, I should point out, has not been distributed to the board because it's, it's improper for the board to consider any written submissions without people hearing in, in person before the board, number one. But secondly, it's also irrelevant, the fact that there may be an environmental issue with respect to the property is really not within the jurisdiction of this board in considering the subdivision application, kidding, considering any application. As I understand it, just to mention that, because I understand neighbor's concern, but, uh, Mr. Zekely has presented me with a copy of a permit application that was filed, and a building permit was issued, I believe on February 3rd, to remove a 1,000 gallon underground oil tank on the property, and that process has commenced. The applicant, like every property owner, has to comply with all requirements of the DEP, and ultimately, when the tank has been removed, assuming there was any evidence of leakage, the DEP would have to sign off on that and confirm that any environmental issues had been fully remediated in accordance with the DEP requirements. So that is a long-winded way of saying that that is a matter that's solely within the jurisdiction of the Department of Environmental Protection, and not a matter for this board to consider.
If, if I might, I just wanted to add that, I think most of you know that, you know, this situation with oil tanks is not exactly uncommon. It does come up, it comes up prevalently, frankly, in the state of New Jersey, it typically comes up on the sale of a property. Everybody has to go through this, and this property is certainly going to go through it as well. There's also a benefit here, because I'm representing someone who wants to acquire the property, and wants to develop the property, as you know, and that gives extra incentive for someone to come in and deal with this expeditiously. As Mr. Trendy likes to say, the application has already been filed, so everything is in the works, and I think I'm very good on that.
Any other questions from the board members? Any questions?
Do we need to put any conditions in the resolution with respect to what was built on the property?
Um, no.
Well, other than that, they commit to comply with setbacks in the height rig.
Right, they haven't presented plans for the houses yet, but they do. They have to comply with the setback requirements, they have to comply with the height requirements. If they, if they don't comply with any of those, they then have to apply for variances. But you see on the subdivision map, the, Mr. Anderson has provided a building envelope, and has indicated that the house will be built within the, within that envelope, meaning in compliance with the. with the setback requirements. And everything about the house or houses will have to comply with all zoning requirements, building code requirements, grading drainage plans, all of that would be.
And HPC presumably.
And of course, HPC, I guess most important.
I just have one, since I'm relatively new to the board here. There have been other similar situations over the years, and would there have been any other considerations that we're not considering right now with additional resolutions or whatever that you've come across as our counsel on this?
Candidly, there haven't been many subdivision applications during my tenure as a board attorney. I can only remember maybe one or two. But there's nothing, to answer your question, I'm not aware of anything.
Additional?
Most ridiculous properties, different considerations, and what I'm thinking of is.
Actually, do you have another question, just actual question? Do you know when the next HPC meeting is where you could present your application to them? I don't know when we're actually going to present it. We're going to talk about that, we may talk about that as quickly as tomorrow. We're going to try to move expeditiously. This is not the kind of thing we're trying to, you know, drag out. We want to go forward with it, but I don't know exactly.
The historic commission meets the first Wednesday, typically meets the first Wednesday or Friday.
So the earliest they could do is the first Wednesday in March. Give time a lot.
Again, I'm not developing, but the plans and what they would need are pretty extensive.
What they would need, yes.
So, you know, I don't know their timeframe, but the board meets, the historic preservation commission meets once a month, typically on the first Wednesday.
And I think, Alan, based on what you said, the timing of that is, is enough two years or something?
Really, the approval is effective for at least two years.
Could we go and issue two charges, go there, show it's a demolition only, get that approval, and then come back with plenty? Do they have to have everything?
Typically, the commission wants to see the removal and what's going on, so they can get one piece of that on each. Which would mean they'd probably need a little more time to prepare plans to go to HPC because they would need to show them what they're proposing, but at least on one lot and replace the existing.
Would it be appropriate for our resolution to put any shorter timeframe on with respect to that, instead of two years, one year, or is that?
I don't think you can. I know you can. Because an applicant might decide not to even proceed with the project, you know, directly. But they run the risk if they wait too long that they lose the protection, and if the zoning requirements change, they might be subject to those changes, which could effectively nullify this if they don't, you know, proceed to protect this subdivision within two years.
Further questions?
Well, not to throw up too many hypotheticals, but what about the appeal process from the HPC decision? How does that?
Comes here.
I understand that, and how does that affect any of this?
It doesn't. I mean, it would just, again, if the house is never demolished, then this approval, if the board grants you the conditional approval, they would never satisfy the condition, and this subdivision would essentially be ineffective. And let me just explain something else. If a subdivision is approved, the applicant has to, what's called, perfect the subdivision. You perfect the subdivision by filing either a mat or a subdivision deed in the county recording office. That's the final step in the process. Normally would be done by deed when you're just dealing with a minor subdivision. The deed, before it can be filed, has to be signed by the chairman and secretary of this board before it can be filed in the county. But again, if the application is approved and it's approved conditionally, conditioned upon the demolition, then that deed would not be signed by this board, could not be filed until the house is demolished. And without the deed being filed ultimately, then there's no subdivision.
Until the house is actually demolished.
Until it's actually demolished, yes. That to me is essential. Again, the house isn't demolished, I don't want to say since this is for you doing it, if the board, you know, approved the subdivision, but it might never come into play.
Any further questions for this witness from the board? Questions from the public for this witness?
My only concern is the.
You need to square in, Michael.
Is there this question?
Oh, okay.
Don't make me wait. My only concern is, I understand they're legally allowed to do this in this board, but there may, I feel there may be undue pressure, influence on the historic commission if they do it this way, if you approving it already for a subdivision, a large subdivision, that they may feel that, hey, the town committee, the planning committee, okay, maybe we should go ahead and make a little unfair influence, I feel they should do in the opposite order.
Hi, Amy Anderson, I would just want to give you a picture of the local town. We moved to Glen Ridge for a beautiful neighborhood, moved to Ridgewood Avenue for the historical vision that it presents. And I feel that, you know, we speak of putting the cart before the horse, that should be something the community and themselves should really consider, because that's why Glen Ridge is pretty special. So I think that, we're being a little too short, this applicant came with a different proposal a couple of weeks ago, obviously a big profit to make from this, has simply turned around and said, hey, we're just going to demolish the house for a quick solution and a quick resolution. But really, we need to think of the community, we need to think of what Glen Ridge stands for, and historical society, community is a big part of that. So I would think that we would probably take a little bit more care in terms of making such a quick decision, just for the benefit of turning profit on the land. But also, that's a big precedent for things to come, so we ask that you consider that. With regard to the oil tanks, the permit was put in.
I don't mean to interrupt you, but this is the time to ask questions.
Sure, your problem, okay.
So if you have questions.
Excuse me, I.
And just so everyone knows, you all have an opportunity later on to make statements.
I just want to say that this is obviously not now proceeding, it's time to ask questions. This is the time for comments, so we're going to have double comments.
We're going to have questions now?
Yes.
Back to the board, comments are at the end of it.
So now.
If you have a question, please, it's a question for this witness.
What I think that you spoke of, we now have a permit following the first application that was put in, the oil tank and all the details were not revealed. Should that environmental concern, they're throwing around, they're not keeping it out, people in the area have wells, should that be kind of finalized before we move forward with anything?
I think I addressed that before in response to the counsel's question. That's not anything that this board has jurisdiction over. Oil tanks are removed every decade. Permits are issued regularly by the building department in town and other municipalities throughout the state. It's a process that is governed by DEP laws and regulations, and this property owner, like every property owner, that is removing the tank has to comply and do testing and present detailed soil samples and a lengthy report to the DEP, and the DEP ultimately has to approve it. But if this board is not, does not consider environmental matters with respect to any applications, it's really not, this is a land use board.
We are here only to look at the application and whether it conforms to the zoning requirements. That's all we can look at.
I just want to make sure based on the previous comments that we're going to have a chance to speak and comment before the board votes on the matter tonight and really fill our own question, is that correct?
You have a chance not to ask questions on this, yes.
I don't have a question, I wanted to speak. Can we do that or not?
Yes, you can.
Demolishing a house on Ridgewood Avenue in the historic district, I believe, is a very serious matter for our town and for everybody that lives here. We all want to think about putting this one in the historic board and hoping that they will be able to wave everything away, all the risks associated with this project, but they're really not empowered to do that. And I'm not sure who it is in this town. Everybody says, I can really look at this, I can really look at this, but nobody's taking a holistic view of the risks involved with this project. With all due respect to Mr. Cummings, who is to validate that he, his group has a financial wherewithal to complete a multimillion dollar project, do it on time and on budget and make it look right? Who is to validate his credentials as a builder and what he's done before or not that will make sure that this project will look right in the middle of our town? And who is to say that eventually when the buildings and the house homes get done, that they're going to fit within everything that we want the house to look like? We all want to put it all back on the historic board, but they really can't look at all those issues. And so I just ask everybody here tonight to consider carefully putting this train motion because once you vote it in, it's going to be very difficult for the process to stop. We're going to be attending the historic board, all the meetings and everything else, and everybody will do our best to make sure that things go the right way, but once we put the train motion, it's going to be very difficult to stop.
This goes along with that, I mean, we don't matter, but what this board does has no effect really on what HPC does. HPC has to review the proposed demolition, review the proposed new houses in accordance with the criteria that's set forth in separate ordinances that governs the historic preservation commission. All this board, if the application is approved, all this board is doing is that, is confirming that this subdivision, proposed subdivision, the two lots that are proposed, meet the criteria of the zoning ordinance and the subdivision ordinance. That's what this board, the only thing this board has jurisdiction over.
I understand that, but that's what everybody keeps saying, I can only look at this, I can only look at this, we all live in this town. Maybe you don't, I don't know if you do, but we all want to take care of what we have here, and I don't hear anybody saying, you know, we need to look at this holistically and take into account the risks involved with this project. There's tremendous risks involved with this project for our town. Thank you.
Any other questions?
I have a question that Mr. Coolip's comment raised in my mind, if I can, you know. Somewhere I heard that the HPC doesn't have to comply with the same notice requirements that the town council and this board does, is that correct?
No notice is required.
No notice is required. Now, I'd like to put in the condition of our application, of our consideration of this, that the applicant provide the same kind of notice to the neighborhood with regard to the HPC application that he has done so far.
That's actually required.
Oh, it is required.
We're doing it.
Okay, very good.
Hi, I'm Jared Tom, I'm about at Fort Millard Ridge Avenue, I'm just going to give you a phone call.
Your address?
Sure, Fort Millard Ridge Avenue. I'm learning a lot about local politics, I don't know a lot about real estate about either, so I have a question. And typically, I'd like to start with, what exactly is the process for demolishing a home in this historic district and then subdividing the land? I'm hearing two different things, with the word "conditions" thrown around a lot. So could someone please speak to that? And then my second question, very simply, is, we're here tonight for a new application or different from the one that we met about last month? And my question is, has that application officially been withdrawn?
Yes.
So with that said.
I thought I saw a withdrawn without prejudice.
What does that mean?
Well, that's a question for Alan or perhaps for the applicant.
They're withdrawing the application but reserving the right to make that application.
Is that what that means? I don't understand how form of two applications and two different.
Let me try to explain. The applicant filed an application that they decided to change their plan, and they have withdrawn that application and come forth with this application. When we say withdrawn without prejudice, means that they've withdrawn it, there's nothing pending, but they are essentially reserving the right, if they wanted to, to come back at a later date with that other application. Is that a fair statement, Mr.?
That's a phrase that commonly comes out of litigation, we use the phrase "without prejudice," meaning that there's been no final determination made in the first case, to be perfectly clear, or withdrawing it without prejudice as opposed to with prejudice, which means forever. And you can only do that, by the way, if it doesn't have a final decision. Having said that, as I'm standing here, I can tell you, we have no intention of going back to the first application. We've gone forward, we've made this application, this is what we want to do. The answer is, yes, in theory, we could bring it again because it's never been decided, but that's not what we intend to do. If we had intended to do that, we wouldn't have filed a new application. This is what we wanted to do. I think Mr. Trumbull like will confirm that this is what anybody would do under these circumstances representing an application. Anybody would do what I just thought. If the old application were renewed or resubmitted a year or two from now, and zoning rules changed in the interim, what rules would apply to that application?
The rule's in effect at the time the application is filed.
The new application, the second iteration of the prior application?
Correct.
The old?
It would not be grandfathered as a draft at the last meeting. Am I hearing you correctly?
If there's, if there's a new app.
Why is there a new application if it still came into possession without?
No, there's no application, okay? The first application is gone, for all intents and purposes. It's not on the table. It's withdrawn, it's not for consideration, the applicant is not asking for it to approve that, the board is not considering that. The board is only considering this application.
The application.
Which concedes the demolition of the house. The rule is that whatever zoning regulations are in place at the time an application is filed, that those regulations apply to the application. So this application has been filed, and the zoning ordinances that are in place today apply to this. Now, if for some reason the applicant came back a year from now and said, you know what, we've changed our mind, we really want to go back to the first plan, and we'd like you to consider that, then the rules that would apply to that application would be the zoning ordinances that are in place at that time, meaning a year from now. So if there were to be a change between now and the filing of a new application, that the new application would be subject to the new.
Okay, so to be very clear, and that's what I need to be clear and understand. So with that said, my next question is, in this case, you know, regardless, it might be decided already, there might be nothing, but you could do nothing with the HPC, so I am the resident of the community and one who really believes in the right thing. I ask you, and I know this has been brought to you already, about ordinance change, because 85 feet, I think we can all come to grade, it's not necessarily the right number. And I'd like to make it so that going forward, you don't have to meet with other homeowners in the same situation, because apparently there's a loophole and builders can come in and demolish homes in historic districts, which is something that none of us knew. And now we're setting a precedent that any home is up for grabs, because a 1949 federal and a 1921 colonial in historic districts doesn't mean anything. So now you have homes for sale on Bridgewater Avenue that have double lots that are not sold. So what sort of message are you sending to the community and sending to builders outside of our community? So that's my question to you. We can examine that and how to start that process, because I've seen a lot of pivoting in four weeks from this builder, and I, I can only imagine that this is going to be more to come. So I would like to protect the vulnerability for my loss, but for all of the lots in the community that have here.
Hi, Michael Bellinger, 438 Bridgewater Avenue. I'd like to comply with procedural rules, but I understand that right now, unless I have a question for the witness, I should wait to the conclusion to make my statement.
That's accurate, that's right.
I will hold my statement until, although I would, just to correct the record before I make my statement later, that it was Mr. Cummings at the last hearing that brought up the environmental issues regarding the property. It was none of the property owners, it was Mr. Cummings who said that there was a problem with the leak and that if he took over the project, he would remediate. And I don't recall hearing anyone say that the board doesn't have to hear anything about environmental things, I don't have to worry. I haven't heard anything on this side of this podium of anyone saying, "We don't have to hear that, that it doesn't matter." I don't remember that, but I'm going to withhold my statement until it's appropriate. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Hi, Trisha Flood. I live in actually two residences right now, which are 418 Bridgewater and 456 Bridgewater. So I plan to just properly, I need to try, unfortunately, I was not really aware of the situation. My neighbor apparently informed me, but I was just wondering why, who makes the, I guess it's 200 feet of the property, would these residents inform? Because I can clearly see the property from both of my residences.
How far are you from the...
Two original feet, because on the 456 and 418.
So it's only 200 feet. So the average property is 100 feet wide. That's only two doors.
Well, if we're talking about averages, the 400 blocks of Bridgewater, you're not really going to get that many homeowners having average, you know, different blocks where the homes are closer together, so.
Sure.
Wouldn't it make sense to change that via the block numbers of...
That's laid out by the state statute.
State statute defines who absolutely has to be given notice, and it's a 200, any property within 200 feet of your property, that's before the board. So, and, you know, that's done by Mr. Zuccelli and the citizens provided the... We have a lot of citizens sending out the notices to everyone within 200 feet.
Anthony Perna, 442 Bridgewater Avenue. Is this a venue where I can ask the applicant question?
You can ask the applicant's witness who testified.
So I can't ask the applicant question?
No.
So I guess my question would be, again, you know, and I know this isn't a venue to address environmental issues and it's a term that I've torn views irrelevant, but actually it's very relevant to me, because as you know, I'm the one who works later and I have a pregnant wife and a two-year-old home. And also I have a well in my backyard. We use the water for our pool. And it just concerns me very much that the applicant, for some reason, did not bring this to light the first time around and sort of, and take the best interests of the neighbors and the community, put that before everything else and immediately take care of this problem. Rather, it came to light at a meeting, right? So that is, so my question would be, why is that the case? And my next question is, you know, to Jeff's point, is there any evidence that the applicant has done quality work in town? Do we have any, do we have any evidence of that? Do we have any, to the contrary, do you have any, do you have any evidence that perhaps he doesn't do quality work? I mean, shouldn't we be taking that all into consideration when we, no? I mean, shouldn't the HPC be aware of all of this, I mean, once we get there? I mean, shouldn't this all be taken into consideration? Because their job is to preserve the historical nature of the, of the neighborhood. So, and I guess that's a question for that, but if they not...
It's really a question for the HPC, but...
Right.
In terms of, I mean, I don't want to get into issues that really aren't before this board.
Right, well, you said that, but the bottom line is...
But listen, but you have to, let me just back up. When I said that environmental issue was irrelevant...
You said that.
I did.
Okay.
But it is very relevant. And I agree, I just want to...
Okay, why didn't I hear that? I want to hear you say it.
It's very relevant, but, but it is not relevant to the application that this board is hearing.
Okay, but everybody in the room should know that it is relevant.
Well, of course it's relevant.
Okay, I like how you said it.
I said it was irrelevant to this application.
Okay, I just want to read that very quick.
All right.
Very relevant to me and my pregnant wife.
And I understand that, and it's relevant to the state and Jersey.
Fine.
It's relevant to everyone in the room, because we're your neighbors and we're community members, but it's not relevant to the topic on the board right now.
Understood. So here's my question. So my question is, why didn't this come to light the first time around and why did the applicant act on it? And why did that become the late in a meeting where, you know, he was playing hardship for the current owner of the home?
Because it's irrelevant. It came up only because Mr. Cummings mentioned in response to some question regarding the timing of this application being considered.
Okay.
He pointed out that in that context, but the applicant has not required, you know, for this application or any application before a planning board to, to provide environmental studies or environmental analysis.
Okay, then Mr. Rollig, can I ask you this? Who is the right person to bring these types of concerns to when, you know, somebody's potentially not working in the best interest of the community?
Well, in the case of the oil tank, it comes under a purview of Department of Environmental Protection.
Okay.
And our contact would be our construction official.
Okay, yeah, we've been in possession.
Yeah, so what occurs, there's a permit to remove the oil tank, the construction official will be monitoring it. It's incumbent upon the remover, if there's ever any evidence of a leak, to report it to the DEP, which they do, which happens here, not occasionally, but as part of tank removal. Then they contact DEP. DEP gives us a notice that there might be contamination. They do the monitoring, do the testing, whatever DEP regulations call for, and then we receive either continued action, response from DEP, or no action.
Okay.
So we go through it, it's not, it's not rare for a tank to have some contamination.
Right. In New Jersey, for whatever, it's very common. But it's not common for a well to be in so close proximity when a family is using it well.
Well, we're not...
That needs certainly to be taken into...
Unaware and hopefully there's no cross connection with your potable water supply. That would be illegal.
Okay, but still, listening to you talking about developing a piece of property where it tends to that could be the case.
Well, we'll check, because you're, by ordinance, your potable water supply has to be disconnected from your well water.
So my well water?
Can't be part of your potable water.
Yeah, but like I said, it goes into the pool and kids, I mean, you would have...
Yes, I do.
You started off with, no, no, yeah. So this is a concern, right?
Right, and DEP will go through a protocol where they'll have monitoring to see how far, if contamination has spread.
Okay.
It's, we've done it on almost every block.
My only concern is that, again, par for the course, whatever you want to say, so moving forward, that's a situation that, you know, could be very, very dangerous. And so I got to answer something to my question so far.
And I believe the DEP has to notify the readiness on record.
Thank you.
Any more questions? Any more questions from public?
Okay, I guess I have a question of the applicant's attorney.
Well, I have a question for him too, and I don't know if he has any other witnesses to present or if he's concluded his case, but he certainly can ask some questions also.
Well, my question goes back to the par for the horse issue, and I understand you have the option of either proceeding before the HPC initially or our board initially. Is that your understanding?
Well, the decision was to make an application for development, and that's a term of argument under the state statute. However, this application to you is an example of an application for development. It's a minor subdivision. And when you do that, and it's true in many municipalities, including language, you make the application here and then it goes to the HPC. And that's the procedure that is outlined in Title 15, and that's the procedure that we're following. So just, I've heard this phrase many, many times, it is not par for the horse situation. This is the way that it is prescribed to be done.
Is it, Alan, is it must be done that way or is it optional for the...
That's optional.
It's optional.
Well, it's not, it's not optional if you, if you have an application for development. If we didn't have to get an approval from this board and all we were going to do was make an application to the construction department to do something, then that's what we would do. But when you have an application for development, and this is one example of an application for development, it is under state law referred over to the HPC, and that's the procedure that we're following. So what we're doing is, is we're saying, "We get that, we understand, we need those approvals. We want to get one piece of it done here," which is admittedly one small piece of it, particularly in a conforming application, okay? We understand that there's another substantial piece that we have to go for.
Where I was headed with this is if it's optional for you to go for the HPC, it's not...
It's not optional. If you have an application for development, you come here and it's referred. State law, Section 110, State Land Use Statute, or it's approximately Section 110, it's only 110 and 15.
So you could not go for HPC approval prior to coming here, even if you wanted to?
You can.
You can.
I, I mean, you can. This is untrue. People do that. I'm saying that what is prescribed, what is prescribed is that in an application for development, you file it here, then it's referred to the HPC.
Well, I, I'm, okay, I'm not sure of that position.
I think the question is, could you go, could you elect to go to the HPC first and have the HPC approve the demolition of this house? And to my knowledge, there's no reason why they could not do that, but, but they don't have to go there first. Because anybody, I mean, anybody in this room who owns a house in town could apply to the HPC to have the house demolished.
Where I was headed is whether you would be willing to do that voluntarily.
The answer to that is no, we're not, because we're following prescribed state law. And I'm trying to find the section. I, I'm saying that I, I practiced in a municipality where for years they did that informally. "Oh, go ahead and go to the HPC first," and I kept saying that that's not what the state law provides, because what primarily brings us in front of you are applications for development. And when you have an application for development, you are to proceed to the planning board or the zoning board first, and then it is referred over to the HPC. And your Title 15 also refers to that as well. I just can't put my hand on it for the moment. What we have to make decisions is to have what proceed, I think as long as we are proceeding according to law, I think it's not fair to ask us to do otherwise. That's my position.
So, but even if you could do it voluntarily, you're saying that you won't?
Yeah, we're going to do it the way we're doing it now. We made the decision to proceed this way, we're doing it legally, and, and that's what we're going to do. We're not doing anything that is not right procedural.
You have your comments?
It's not after comments.
Let's see, four to six, I'm not sure.
What, should we take any other witnesses? Do you have any other witnesses? Do you have any other witnesses?
I, I do not have any other witnesses, that's the only witness I have. I guess no other witnesses will be called, so I have nothing to reserve and rebuttal. I would just note I've marked all the exhibits, I would move those into the record and I don't want further call. Oh, Mr. Chairman, just one more thing. I understand how you're going to collect some public comment, and if I think it's appropriate in, I'd like the opportunity to respond and maybe sum a few things up. I don't think I'll have much to say, if I do.
Okay. Oh, the comment, please?
I, I just have one more question. So if, if they weren't subdividing it tonight, making that proposal, if they were just demolishing the house and, and putting up a new house, just one, they wouldn't need our approval at all?
What happens if they come before this board? That would just be an HPC application.
I think you're right, you have all the questions, you've got a lot of good information.
Okay, would you just, uh, state your name and...
Sure, sorry, Amy Atkinson, I live at 428 Bridgewater Avenue, I have a son and three children. So it sounds like you do not want to go to Bridgewater Avenue for a long time here, but it appears that you're going to go for it in your right mind. But given that we all care about the community, all of those who live here and want to come up, don't live here, but all the people living in Glen Ridge value it for the historical nature of the community that it's about, why wouldn't you want to kind of see your neighbor in developing a property that we're all going to be looking at for quite some time? Is it so out of the ordinary to ask you to go to the HPC first, and we all feel very comfortable with this proposal? I think that part of developing in the neighborhood is conforming to the people who live there and the New York feeling, that's what we all get from Glen Ridge. So I just, as neighbors of Glen Ridge, would hope that in any decision made, even if it has to happen, everyone, from the builder, Mr. Cummings, that you might consider the community. This is sort of an unprecedented thing, so I don't think that would be an unusual request. And then for the members of the board who live in Glen Ridge can understand, with the community and the people who live here and how we feel about our surroundings, it's very, very important and probably should, in fact, should come ahead of a builder who lives out of town, who is not part of the community yet, who is developing something for his business and his profit. I think this sense of community is more important, and that should be considered. And I think that that's very important to put all on your minds. We have a group of people here, lots of people who are involved, we have a wonderful neighborhood, and I hate the fact that we can just make such a big decision without some struggle and put, and really a sense of what Glen Ridge stands for, what Glen Ridge would always look like, and just thinking about your neighbors. I think that's a pretty realistic thing to reflect. Maybe idealistic in this time of making money, but I think very, very important. So thank you.
Thank you. No public comment?
Michael Bellinger, 438 Bridgewater Avenue. One would wonder why less than a month ago, there was one application before this board, and all of a sudden that application's not gone, it's just removed without prejudice, and all of a sudden there's a new one. Now, before this meeting, I had a chance to talk to Mr. Cummings, and I thought we had a fairly good, productive conversation. So I'm going to ask Mr. Cummings to agree and voluntarily go along with the board and go to HPC first and have HPC say, "It's okay to demol, to demolish this building, and we agree with you doing that." And then you come back here and say, "You know what? They said it's okay." And then we'll come back and say, "Well, they said it's okay, then maybe it's okay for you to subdue that." I mean, we talked about neighbors and how the neighbors feel, and that's how we feel, that's how they feel. Everyone feels very uncomfortable about if it's, if you can do it either way, why do you do it first? Why are you being pushed to do this first? Why are we hearing, well, this is the way the law says, trust me when I tell you, you can delay this, they can go to HPC, HPC can approve it, and then they can come back. It's a, it's their option, that's true. It's also your option. It's your option to say, "We're going to wait. We're not going to do it conditionally. We're going to put this on hold, go to HPC, get their approval, and come back." You can do that, no matter what anyone else tells you in this room. You can do that. That's why they're here, that's why it's an application, that's why they're asking for your vote. then they can come back. It's a, it's their option, that's true. It's also your option. It's your option to say, we're going to wait. We're not going to do it conditionally. We're going to put this on hold, go to HPC, get their approval, and come back. You can do that, no matter what anyone else tells you in this room. You can do that. That's why they're here. That's why it's an application. That's why they're asking for your vote. If it was a rubber stamp, what would we need you for? We wouldn't even have a planning board. That's why we have a planning board. So you should send them to HPC. They should get HPC approval, and once they hear that, they should go back.
Any other members of the board? Comment, the comment? Okay. More discussion?
I'd like to get some clarification from Alan on this issue of HPC and planning board.
Well, I mean.
I heard you tell me from the other side saying that it has to be on the planning board. What's the?
I, I don't believe, I believe where there's multiple approvals required for any project. In this case, you have HPC approval, you have planning board approval, that under the Missland Land Use Law, and I believe under the Burrows ordinance, is the applicant has the option as to how he wishes to proceed, whether to go to HPC first or to go to this board first. The reality is that in order for the house to be demolished and for two new residences to be built, they need this board's approval and they need HPC's approval. Two different approvals, different standards, um, different laws that apply. One of the things that, you know, concerns me, and I don't understand why there seems to be a perception of the, of the, of the residents that if this board were to approve this, that they're somehow sending a message to the HPC and taking away the authority that the HPC has to do what's in the best interest of the community in determining whether the house should be demolished and what the new houses, you know, should look like. The HPC has full authority over demolition, um, and, and the design of any new residences. This board does not.
Alan? You know. Does the HPC ever put conditions on our pullback? So if our approval is based on, there would be approval, it's a conditional, is it the opposite too as well? Probably not. So the order should be the other way in my mind, because then we would have something tangible. We, we, we wouldn't be doing our speculation. It'd save a lot of benefits. But it's plausible.
Well, just to back up on one, the planning board, one and two family houses, we can't by state statute get into the nothing bowl where trees go, like, you know, the things we do when we go get commercial properties. One and two family houses, as long as they meet that criteria and have the historic commission's approval, this board can't get into those, those little things with one and two families. So with the historic commission, where somebody might go, it might go back and forth and back and forth, is when somebody needs, we're talking variances, or they want to be too close to the property, they won't meet all the criteria. So they might go to HPC first, and they might change the math, and then might go back, go back and forth between, between those two boards. But something in this case, this board doesn't hook at that, where you might be more related to the commercial development, where you have lighting, drainage, trees, landscaping, these are the areas. One and two families, that's what we don't know, for our boards to get involved with that.
When the first application came in, the client went, the applicant went to the HPC first, and I don't understand the logic now that they wanted to deal with it.
The first time I ran it, it was an application to the HPC to, I, I, I don't know the exact timing of which was filed first, but that was an application for a modification to the sun porch to allow, to, to, to prevent a variance that allowed a different form of development. I want to clarify what I said before in this regard. I was correct in Section 110 of the State Land Use Law, and it's very clear, I'm going to quote from it, it says, "The planning board in order of adjustment shall refer to the Historic Preservation Commission every application for development submitted to either board." So we are doing it the correct way this time. It's not, it's not optional. What I meant to say was, there are municipalities who don't follow what the state statute says. They say, just go to the HPC first, and that is not in accordance with the law. So if someone is coming up here and saying to you with this microphone, it's your option, you can deny this application, and you can make people go to the HPC first, that is not true, and that's why I just read Mr. Tremulight.
Now you read that we refer to HPC. It doesn't say that we have to approve and then refer.
It, it doesn't say.
It doesn't say approve and refer. It just says refer to the HPC.
That's right. Refer to the HPC, and that's why, and that's why what we do is, is we say, understanding that, that you need to be referred to there, we understand that they need to approve it. They do need to approve it, and that's why we have offered from the very outset to make it a condition of approval. I'll just be restating what Mr. Tremulight said to you, you know, several times tonight. We get you, we understand, you need approval from that body to remove this house and for the new construction. That is crystal clear to us. We just have a number of hurdles to go through. This is the first one. You should feel ultimately protected because of those conditions of approval, and I'm sure Mr. Tremulight will word to your satisfaction. I think you should feel very comfortable with the process that we're following.
So, I'm sorry, the Section 110 says that we shall refer matters within the HPC jurisdiction to them?
No, no, you shall refer an application for development that concerns, in this particular case, a property in a historic district. That's what you're going to say. If there was a property that wasn't in the Glen Ridge historic district, there would be no referral. But you refer it to them for their approval of this component.
And in the meantime, we defer action until they get that, that's it?
You don't defer action, is what I'm saying. Are we allowed to, to argue this, since he's arguing? Okay.
He was asked a question. He was asked a question by Mr. Cummings. So, I think I've tried to say this a number of different ways, and, and first of all, I don't believe the statute that Mr. Owen cited is, is applicable to the situation we are in. But you have an application that requires multiple approvals. The applicant is not required to go to HPC first and then come here, or to come here first and then go to HPC. The applicant can choose, has the option to choose which approvals it wants to seek first. You know, there are, you know, larger approvals, uh, projects could require approval from multiple agencies, D, you know, Department of Transportation, County Planning Board, Soil Conservation Districts, you know, and all those things have to be in place before somebody puts a shovel in the ground. But the state statute allows for an applicant to proceed in the order it wishes, and with any approvals being conditioned upon, the applicant obtaining all the other necessary approvals that are required to go forward with the project. So I understand that this board, you know, would like the applicant to go to HPC first. I don't think there's any legal requirement that says that the applicant has to go to HPC first. Okay, thanks. Other comments? Questions? Motion?
I guess, I'm, I'm concerned with the timing requirement that has been discussed here in terms of, should this application be considered and approved tonight by this board? It in effect might start this two-year clock, whereas, is it correct to say if they're required to go to the HPC first, they would then come back to this board, and then that clock might start?
Other questions? Mr. Saccili, the application being completed? That was, uh, we just, we take down, we take quiet, so that's the clock.
So that sets the clock, so.
Forty-five days.
So that's probably how we.
But to answer your question, um, the period that you're referring to would start to run from the adoption of the board's resolution. The board approves this, and a resolution's prepared. Typically, at the next meeting, the board would adopt the resolution, and the two-year period that I think you're referring to would start to run from the adoption of the resolution, which means they have, they'd be protected for two years, um, from any changes in the zoning requirements. Okay, but otherwise, so if the ordinance has changed, for a lot to now, and requires larger lots, or lots with more front, uh, more width, they would be protected from that for a period of two years.
I, I, so we have to approve the application within forty-five days?
Or it has to make a decision within forty-five days.
And how many days have been, are we into it right now?
Uh, maybe ten.
And historic, uh, they meet how many days from now?
Well, that, if the application has to, they have no application.
Oh, okay.
You know, I, I think it's, you know, maybe it's important at this time to just explain really what this board is being asked to approve. Being asked to approve a subdivision, which is essentially drawing a lot of, you know, creating two buildable lots from what is currently one buildable lot, which would allow for two houses to be built on this property. And, you know, the applicant has to show that the size of the proposed lots complies with your, with, let's say, your requirements, Burrows requirements. If I had to reinvent or explain, you have a lot area requirement of eighty-five hundred square feet, lots have to be at least that size. These lots apparently comply with the minimum lot. Same thing, they comply with the lot width requirements, they comply with the lot depth requirements. Um, and, you know, the law in New Jersey has been very clear for about twenty years that, you know, the board has to look at these objective criteria that have been adopted by the Borough Council in the case of what the requirements are for lots in the R1 zoning district, and make a determination as to whether these lots comply with those requirements. It's a, really a fairly narrow function that this board has. Does this meet the criteria to allow for the property to be subdivided? Now clearly, given the existing house, you know, they could not proceed with the subdivision plan. If you authorize a line to be drawn, but the, the house is never demolished, then the, the subdivision will never take effect. Now, so the, you know, the applicant is saying, look, we're going to demolish the house, so you should look at these lots as if the house wasn't there, and determine whether the application meets the requirements of the ordinance. And that's what the board's function is here. Whether the house ultimately gets demolished and what goes in its place is not for this board to determine. But the decision is contingent upon the, the clearance to HPC and zoning requirements for the size of, and the setbacks of the. Oh, yeah, the house, exactly, yes.
Chair, with your permission, I'd like to move a motion. I think we.
I think we had one more question first.
I just, what truly are our options, as they are to delay? It still looks like we can't deny, because it's such. You know, when we talk about community, right? In my mind, it would be cleaner and not let these neighbors go home with this worry. Get it done the other way. But if we don't have a right to do this, then what's, where, what's the guidance for you in terms of order? Delay is an option for us. We don't have to decide tonight. We can't deny that it meets the criteria. I don't, I can't, I, I understand the law, I mean, you have to abide by the, the regulations. I think in good spirit, it would be better to go to the planning board, come back with something, I mean, go to the, come back with something that they look at, they look at your model, we see it, we can touch it, it feels good, and that, that makes me feel better. I just don't know what options I have.
I, I understand that. I don't think you really have the option to require that, but, um, and.
But we have an option to.
Yeah, do we have to vote tonight on? I mean, we don't.
No.
Have to vote tonight? Uh, no, but you should vote within the forty-five day.
Right.
We must vote within the forty-five days.
The applicant can claim that they were entitled to the approval by, by not acting. So you have a forty-five day, um, time period under state statute.
Then the applicant could withdraw with whatever the criteria. And then they leave here, go to the HPC, get everything in order, and then come back for that petition.
It's due to the application.
I mean, I know that every board that needs to approve this can't go first. But our, the presentation, presentation to us is hypothetical. Presentation to the Historic Preservation Commission would be, would be less hypothetical, yes. And so we're, we are required to act on what is in effect a hypothetical or contingent subdivision application?
I believe you are, but again.
So, and I could throw one out there from my part if I wanted to, and you'd have to act on it, and say someday I might demolish my house? We'd have to act on it.
With, yeah, with all, all this study. Yes, you, I mean, acting on what's within the limited jurisdiction of this board, yes, you know, but conditioned upon all the necessary HPC approvals. I mean, again, I mean, I don't want to, you know, tell this board that the law says you have to approve this, but the law says that your function here is to, assuming the house is demolished, because they're saying the house is going to be demolished, do these lots comply with your ones? I, I don't believe there's been any testimony to suggest that they don't.
Yes, do we just, is there any further review of the measurements, et cetera, by the town or by anybody else?
The only thing that further that would be reviewed is when, if, when, when plans are submitted for the new houses, those should be reviewed like any plans are reviewed by Mr. Saccili in the construction department. And, uh, part of that review would be to make sure that the location of any new houses comply with the setback requirements, comply with the height requirements, and of course, all of the building code requirements.
But in terms of the measurements that justify the app, the compliance with all of the zoning regulations in place now, I mean, we have a steel.
Yeah, we still.
Book from an engineer.
Drawing from an engineer.
And there's no further.
We have from the engineer, and we have the memo from Mr. Saccili.
Right.
So that's all we can go with.
That's a check, a done check.
Now, we can ask the chair, can we ask the applicant one more time, will they reconsider and go to the Historic Preservation Commission first?
Applicant?
I'm sorry.
Will you reconsider and go to HPC first?
Well, you know, we, we have made a decision as to how we want to proceed, and we're doing it according to law. I understand your questions, and all I can say again is, is to reiterate what Mr. Tremulight is telling you, this is one small piece of this process. The HPC is going to review this, they're going to look at detailed plans. I don't think it's a good idea to especially, you know, have a discussion, what can we do to delay the applicant, what can we do? I mean, what you have here tonight, you're never going to have anymore that's going to come in front of you for a decision. You may not be happy to hear this, but this is the law. I'm trying to go out of my way and be as clear as I can. I'm sure Mr. Tremulight is trying to do the same thing. There really isn't any reason to ask us to do something in, in, in a way that we're not required to do it. I, I say that with all due respect. Um, I've handled these minor subdivisions, I wouldn't say frequently, I've never had one here, I've handled them in a number of other places, and, uh, and I, I know there's an educational process here, but I, I feel very comfortable with making the elections that we've made, and I think you should feel comfortable, and the people who are behind me, that this is going to be reviewed, the plans will be reviewed. If the HPC disagrees with demolition, disagrees with the plans, doesn't like them, then it's going to make the decision that it is empowered to make. I agree with Mr. Tremulight, that, that just happens to not be within your purview. There's no reason to delay the process. You want, okay, I'm, I'm going to ask my client to, are you calling me to the witness? I, I just want to make a comment. If you want to swear, maybe you can, but you.
I would indicate that you had completed your case. It's up to the chair, really, the board to, to have discretion to.
Yeah, I would like discretion. I've been asked, I would like discretion. I was concerned about that. So I'm here with the board, I don't like to.
Should I, should I request that you be sworn in?
Yeah, you should be sworn in. Yes. To raise your hand, do you affirm to tell the truth in matters pending before this board?
Yes, I do.
State your name, please.
Michael Cummings.
Thank you. Okay, um, or to begin? Okay, um, words begin, the, the cart and the horse issue. Both the cart and the horse have to be revised. So, in, in this thing will never happen unless this board and the HPC prove it. If they don't both happen, now as far as the order of things, why we go here first? Because you talked about whether something is hypothetical. If there's not going to be two lots, if there's not going to be two houses, why, frequently, I do not want to take my argument, it's a very arduous task to go to the HPC. If, and they, I've rendered it myself, personally on applications for things in this town, I've done it over each or dozen times. They never do anything in one. I mean, I, I'll, this is, I'll give you the factors here. I want to get this to approval, you know, and that to be, okay? And building a whole new house, I mean, I, I mean, it would take eight meetings, it's happened before. So let's sort of play out the timing here. You delay it tonight, I, I am passing my whip over my architect to try to get something before the March fourth meeting. He says he can do it, maybe not, because we don't, we don't want to go there unless it's something we like. I'm, I'm, I'm the first person, I might like it first, if I don't like it, we're not going to go forward. So if you're ready to go there, the, the odds are it's very small they would approve that. So when we came back here next month, whatever plans I had, it would be, it wouldn't be the real plan. So, again, you'd be asking, why should I go to the board to go, all they have to go to the board are two houses, when there aren't two lots? You're asking, you're asking what I consider to put the cart before the horse, so.
Can I just interrupt for a second, would you mind?
Sure.
Uh, our function, if your measurements are correct, is basically ministerial, right? We look at the measurements, if they're correct, we grant them. So it's basically painless to put us second, for you.
No, it's not painless. Because it may not, still, it may not happen.
But, but we wouldn't have the right to deny an application for a subdivision, uh, anymore in the future than we do now.
But it, you know, I, I don't want to take it.
Whereas, whereas if the HPC denies your permission, for whatever reason it might be, then it's moot for us.
Well, well, they will, not another issue, they, they always try this, try that. So the odd of them approving it, they won't deny it absolutely, the first meeting, bill, but will we here next month and have nothing new to say, all like it? And then you have a decision, you have to approve, then if you don't approve by then, then it becomes moot, right? So, um, anyway, I don't know what to say, that for, for me, the task of going through all of, okay, two houses, where I don't know for sure there's going to be two lots, and it's also just that it's a moot exercise. And you will see everything, I will keep everybody know. I think Mr. Owens mentioned.
But I, I, I really don't understand, you don't know for sure that there are going to be two lots now, because it's contingent on HPC approval.
No, no, the HPC would, I know, no, no.
No, yes, they, our, our approval of two lots is contingent on HPC granting permission to that project.
The, the.
So he doesn't know for sure that there are two lots now.
Certainly.
It's contingent, yeah. But.
For.
I have a comment for the armchair part of this, uh, support. Uh, Mr. Tringelite said that if we don't approve this application tonight or what have you, it's forty-five days and it automatically gets approved anyway, so.
If you don't vote on it, I need to break that. If you don't act on it within forty-five days, the applicant could, can claim then to title to approval despite failure to act. And saying that would be cruel.
But we can't deny it either, under the, the law. But what I'm, the reason I bring it up is, is for the, the public and also for our board, because I think we're all sitting here with a heavy heart right now. And, and to go back to these comments of the laws and the loopholes, the, this board can't make laws, you have to go to the town council to, to get laws approved and, and put into law. But the reason I bring it up is, if this board did want to wait, or did somehow put this on hold, because I think, and I, I won't speak for everybody, but I think there is a feeling that we have a heavy heart in, in approving, um, this application, even though it does, um, is within the law and legally we're sort of bound to approve it, would the board feel better if there was a motion made to put it on hold and let it automatically improve?
Well, I can respond to that more quickly. My reaction to that would depend on whether the conditions would still take effect. I don't want to have it, uh, approved by operation of law without the kind of conditions that we all feel are important.
Take a class.
But I actually have another question for Mr. Cummings, if you don't mind. One of the things that concerns me about the order in which these things are being approved is, if we approve the subdivision, HPC doesn't approve your plans, would you represent that you won't be back here with Plan A, the eighty-five foot lot?
Um, so you're asking, yeah, the chair, um, that if we say, if you deny.
No, no, I'm concerned that at the few months from now, a year from now, you haven't gotten the kind of satisfaction you want from the HPC for the two homes scenario. I don't want, I would like, I prefer if you don't come back here with your eighty-five foot lot proposal.
Well, it's only to say, if you really want that eighty-five foot lot proposal, I mean, I'll be so frank here, I prefer the hundred foot lot proposal, um, and if that gets approved, then that's the best way to guarantee that it's definitely an eighty-five foot.
I can't guarantee that, only the HPC can, can do that.
Right, so that's, but that's all I can say, I can't say for sure.
Well, I would, I was wondering whether you would represent to us now, that you will not revisit that eighty-five foot proposal? It, it kind of raises a legal issue. I think you said the same thing I said before, and it's really absolutely not the intention, but we can't be in a position where we're giving up a legal right while the advance of it being an issue. And I'm not trying to not understand you and play, well, this is really what we want to do, that's why we applied for it, because what we hope happens. I appreciate that. We, we really don't want to do the old plan. You're not willing to give up that legal right? No, no one ever wants to give up legal rights. Well, they don't want to, but. Yeah. Sometimes it's the right thing to do, but I understand that, I'm not, I can't force you to do it, I just, yeah.
So can I just ask a counter question on that? If we, um, suggest that we withhold this to our next meeting, and vote on it within the forty-five days, we can add to it the, the conditions that we want, and we might be feeling a little bit better if they got to visit with the HPC in that first meeting of the month. It could happen, it could not, but we, we don't want to, we don't lose any ability by, by waiting a month till our next meeting.
True. I, I can say to Mr. Cummings one, there's, uh, I've seen the previous secretary of the historic commission, two new houses being approved at one meeting, wouldn't even.
But it's good faith, it's karma, if, if they go and present something, at least they start at that top and navigate.
I can't take their time.
It would be difficult to do that time.
I, I just have a question for the secretary, it, when does that forty-five day period expire, is it before or after our next meeting?
That's right.
So, if you have a moment, I'll.
Yeah.
I don't know if this helps or not, but all.
Because we're a week ahead.
The next planning board is Wednesday, March eighteenth. At least that's what I have. Wednesday, March eighteenth.
Council promote, that's why the date of, uh, the termination is important, because with the second. It, it is not going to mean it's from the date it is being completed, so it's going to be.
Just to be clear, we're not going to make the next meeting.
Okay.
I'm sorry, I'm here.
We're not going to make the next meeting.
Unless the applicant agrees.
That's right.
Yeah.
Okay.
That's a minor legal right, the rest.
Before, before the board has any further discussion, would the applicant be willing to leave the planning board?
Under the circumstances of this case, we're not going to extend the contract. It's not, it's not a matter of disrespect, it's a matter of, you know, we're, we're facing a lot of hurdles here, it's obvious. This is not a case where we're asking for marriage relief, we're asking to look at something again, we're asking us to look at something again. This is a case where we are presenting a fully informed subdivision for you to do the assigned task that you have, and I ask you to do more. Again, we understand what the HPC has to do, you know, it's hard enough, why should we be asking, give up legal rights when we do things that we're not required to?
With, with all due respect, we understand that, you made that fully clear, um, but considering the, the community's comments, we felt we could ask. But now, we know.
And, and of course, what we'll do is we will provide votes in the HPC, we'll make sure that the plans are available, and make sure there'll be all input that's possible with the HPC. But we do understand that, that's part of the condition.
What would be the, um, the reason for postponing the votes? I mean, what would change between now and the next meeting? Just trying to understand.
So from my standpoint, nothing, from some of the board, I think there is some things, but I think, you know, we need to keep any consideration, you know, we need to know the timeframe because there's, there's a lot of flack in here, we're all very, it's a very emotional topic.
I was just wanting to understand what, you know, other than perhaps filing an application with HPC.
Right. Yeah, taking some action towards that, but I think, you know, we all need to keep in, in mind that if we're going to put contingencies on this, we have to do it, and we can't default and not do it. So, Mr. Owens.
I think the board would feel more comfortable not on approval of the two new homes. I know that's not going to occur to me, but at least to get the HPC's opinion on the existing structure. If they believe that it's, if you could build two homes that are compatible with the community, if they believe that the structure that should be raised. So the question's not for approval, then, because you're never going to get approval, and I agree with Mr. Cummings, you're never going to get approval on committee, or how do you appropriate feedback? But the existing home, is that worth saving, or is that a house that they believe, uh, structure that they believe should be raised, could be raised, if you had two appropriate structures and replace, replacing that structure? I think that's what I'm hearing from the committee, not, uh, I mean, from the commission, not that the fact that we have HPC approval for the new structure, what's your opinion on the existing structure?
But Chair, can we refer to the historic commission itself directly? Their opinion on this, uh, new application with the new, uh, the dem, uh, demolition of the houses? Instead of the applicant going, why, why can't we refer to the historic commission and get their opinion? And then meet after four.
What gets committed to the commission is different than what's submitted here.
Right, so.
And, and how.
But procedureally, we can't send it there, but the HPC, the applicant must, they, they have this plan.
No, no, the question is going to be the demolition of the house, and can the chair of planning board refer it to the historic commission? Get their opinion and be discussed at the next meeting?
I'm sorry, I gave you the opinion.
But then, what else? I think that's, I think we should be able to do that. I have a be- pass a motion to refer it to HPC to give their opinion on the demo of the house.
The commission for demolitions in the past, they want to see what's going up. Before they approved the demolition, for example, on Sherman Avenue, the demolition of the house, they wanted to see what was replacing that structure.
The complete demo?
Yeah. Uh, same on Old Oak Road, on the corner of Old Oak and Ridgewood, they wanted to see. Before they approved the demolition, they wanted to together, uh, before they would make an approval, and that's to, to the HPC. Middle issue, there's a lot of work. They typically want a street sheet, they want to see a few houses on the other side of the matching, and they want to see how those fit within that matching. These are not quick drawings that you just run around. So that's why I'm saying that, and, and then they typically would be at least two times or something, or it's nature to, to that, I can't write the details. But again, going through the demolition, they, in most cases, want to see the complete project from beginning to end. They don't just want, yeah, that, that house might be appropriate for demo, they want to see.
So do they, so they don't separately opine or consider what's like historically significant, or they wouldn't do that in the absence of considering what's going up? I mean, I realize these are unusual and extraordinary questions, but I think we all feel that we're faced.
Sure, um, four, four fifty-one Ridgewood, uh, that was a ranch home with a slate roof with a, everyone already heard with the certainly driveway. The applicant was interested in spellbinding that property. They want to demo that structure and build the new, and they wanted to see, the applicant at that point just wanted to see, A, the applicant feeling on the structure. We want to see the whole package from beginning to end, not just discuss that structure in and of itself, is it appropriate to take in or not? I assume though, Mike, that if there was a house that had such clear and obvious historical significance or architectural significance that the HPC could say that house is too important, um, and could refuse to demolish it, and that.
But, but there's, there's no mechanism for the chair of planning board to refer something to.
Because the pass a res, a motion to refer it to HPC, and that they, they should give us their opinion by our next meeting. We are not asking for details, but if there is anything significant which tells them that, oh, this house cannot be demolished, then there's no point in approving the application.
The only problem I see with that is that it takes us past the forty-five day period where we're, we're going to basically get an approval by the call without our contingencies.
Can we just start meeting up?
Yeah.
How can we get this one? I'm also, this is another pickle, but I'm concerned about the precise wording of whatever conditions or contingencies we have. I don't know if we're planning to draft those this evening, or.
Yeah, we will, we're going to do that right now.
Yeah.
I mean, that, that would be the next, that would be part of the process.
We would make a motion, and I would have to prepare a written resolution memorializing the board's decision, which you then have to review and approve the wording.
And so we could amend the wording thereafter?
Sure.
Yeah, we, we get, we get, you haven't seen this, but we get copies of it before the next meeting, and then we talk about it next meeting, or prove.
So, but the wording of the con, of the conditions is subject to amendment.
Yes.
Past the forty-five day period.
Yes, you have to act, yes, and then there's a, a separate statute that provides for a time period to adopt a written resolution. But that's almost, that's, I don't want to say it's meaningless, but what normally happens, you know, on any application is the board makes a decision to approve or deny, um, with conditions if it's approved. At the following meeting, um, I will have a, a written resolution prepared, which is my understanding of what the board's, uh, decision is, and the conditions that are attached to the, um, to the resolution. And the board has to review that and approve the wording or not approve it, and, you know, change the language. But ultimately, there has to be a written document memorializing the board's decisions, which has to be voted upon and adopted by the board. Usually, almost always at the, the next meeting after the action is taken.
So we need to have a, your motion or a suggestion, that'll make the need forward.
Okay, so I'll put a motion on the table to approve the application with the condition that the demolition of the house has to be approved by HPC.
And add, and do we want to add anything about the construction of the, the full package, and we said, make sure I have that one. The drainage plant.
Grading plant.
The grating drainage plant, the, and, and the construction of, the replacement construction.
Yes.
And, and the, and the properties have to conform.
Well, I think it will obviously be that the new dwellings have to meet the zoning requirements, but.
Right, it should be zero problems. It should be zero.
I think the applicant also said they will give notice to the enjoyers.
Right, add that in as well. Right, add that in as well.
Oh, no, the HPC...
I put HPC in, I'm sorry.
Those are like four conditions now. Right, the demolition of the house by, approval by HPC, the notice of HPC meeting to all the residents, approval of the... The new dwellings to meet the zoning requirements and the setbacks, and number four was the drainage plant.
Drainage and drainage to prove that, and the...
With those four conditions, I put the motion.
I'm wondering whether we could, and this might require the consent of the applicant, require notification beyond the 200 foot requirement? I think there's some concern among the neighborhood that not everybody perhaps who wants notice is getting it.
I don't think there's any authority to that, and I also have a feeling that word will get around the neighborhood. That's just a practical comment, but I...
Yeah, maybe, yeah.
You know, the state, the state statute provides specifically two...
Right, thank you.
So, you could, I mean, the applicant would have to agree.
Well, that, in that case, I would put it to the applicant.
Yeah, there's actually a decision on that point where, it was either 300 feet or 500 feet, and there's a decision that fell, and this is for Mr. Tremulak, this is, you can't make that a requirement. We will do the 200 foot list and tell all these people, so that they, and we'll also put a notice of the decision.
All right. Okay, that's, I would much rather they skip the notice of the newspaper and mailed it to 500 feet, speaking myself, but...
We're not going to do a 500 foot mailing, we're happy for it, we'll put it in the newspaper, we're going to do what the law asks us to do, we're going to put it in the newspaper, we'll do it within 200 feet, we'll do what we did this time, we'll make the plans available to people if they want to come down, if you get a copy of the plans, okay? And we're going to be as accommodating as we can, but I don't want to run afoul of the decision of law that says 200 feet is 200 feet.
Well, the decision of the law does, you don't have to. Let's be fair, this is a request that we're making, if you don't want to do it, I hear you, but don't tell me that you're denying that request because the law prohibits you from doing it. I'm sorry.
Can I, can I just ask, I'm sorry, I have one other, first, I guess, I don't know if it's a procedural or out of order, but, and it's really a question for Mr. Tremulak, are there instances where a change in town zoning requirements could be applied to a current or pending application? In other words, if in the interim, hypothetically, this does extend beyond this time period, the approvals, and there is a change in zoning requirements, could, could they be applied?
If it's a zoning requirement, I'm confident that the answer to that is no. The only exception to that is if it's a regulation, and I think, you know, the wording of statute, I think, talks about if it affects public health and safety, or some regulation, but that wouldn't be a zoning requirement.
I guess I, I only bring this up because the second item of new business, which, okay, we have to deal with the first.
Do we have a motion on the floor right now?
Yeah. I actually have one other condition, potentially, and this is, I think, maybe unnecessary, but I think it would for the comfort of some of the residents, that our approval also states that we take no position as to whether or not demolition and/or reconstruction of two dwellings is or is not appropriate.
I just, I'm sorry. That's all. Okay, then, I'd like to go one step further, Alan, if it's, first of all, HPC will receive a copy of the full resolution, right?
Sure.
Okay, that'll include the recitals to the motion? So, I'd like to add in a recital that it's actually, if the other board members agree, that it was the preference of the board that the applicant go to HPC first, prior to coming to our planning board for approval. And furthermore, right, planning board requested the applicant to voluntarily go before HPC, and the applicant refused to do so.
Okay, I can add both of those comments.
And then finally, this is not in the whereas, but is part of the actual decision or motion, I'd like to add in, to the extent that the HPC denies the applicant request to demo the existing structure, that the planning board's conditional approval be automatically rescinded without further action required by the planning board. If everyone agrees.
I don't have a problem with that, because I think non-satisfaction of the condition has the same effect, but, so...
Okay, so you want to do the summarization, too?
Do you have any summary?
I'll give, I'll give a, right. Sorry. Grading and drainage plants to be reviewed and approved by the rural engineer, all new construction needs must be well coming criteria. Three, the applicant must receive HPC approval for demolition and construction of two new houses. Notice for their application before HPC must be given to all property owners and published in the paper. Three, or, or, five, the commission, or, excuse me, the planning board takes no position as to the HPC's approval or denial of the applicant's application for HPC. And within that, there will be some recitals, not as a condition, but some recitals in the, I mentioned by, mentioned by Mr. Hickory, that the board says that the applicant can go to HPC, and be that the planning board requested the applicant deny this request. And the fifth condition, if the demolition of the structure, existing structure at 437 Ridgewood is denied, the board's approval is rescinded automatically.
Conditional approval is rescinded automatically.
Do we have a second?
I'll second. For discussion.
Shall we vote?
I'll call a roll. It was a motion by Mahotra, seconded by Hickory. Wardes?
Yes.
Fields?
Aye.
Hickory?
Aye.
Mahotra?
Aye.
Councilperson Morrow?
Aye.
Robert Morrow?
Aye.
Rojo?
Aye.
Tarano?
Aye.
Cherry?
Aye.
The motion carries.
Thank you.
We have all...
We still have business, we still have business to conduct, so everyone, please, if you're going to leave, please do so quietly, and if you're going to take any conversations, please take them outside to the, to the foyer. Okay, all business.
We actually have a second item of new business?
It would be in the news, after all business.
Oh, okay, sorry.
After all business. So, just real quick, Chair, one, the redevelopment study on One Bay Avenue, the council took our referral and request, and they did adopt the resolution entering into contact with H2M to start the redevelopment study.
Okay, and to ask Mr. Chikol, to support, the council of Montclair approved it last night after a council meeting, and we have a meeting set up tomorrow at 10 o'clock to set up the time schedule, and all the, that will be taken as part of the process.
That's, that's a good...
What's the timeframe of that?
We're hoping, if it's, if it's, it's actually two phase, we're hoping the school and nursing, which has been Glen Ridge, partially in Glen Ridge, will take about 60 days, although it's probably taking another 60 days to complete the study, besides school and nursing, the 17 other properties that Montclair had, have to be included into the study. So, we're going to, small, new attempt, so that we can focus on the nursing school first, and then look at 17 other properties to complete the statutes right there.
New, new business. I'd like to refer a matter to the planning board, it's being referred by the council at the council meeting held on February 9th, and it relates to written communication from a resident, Melissa Wertz. The communication was sent to me following the planning board meeting on January 21st, and it was, in essence, I guess, of a procedural question, as to how a resident can request or propose that the council consider a zoning change in lot width. I mean, the substance of the proposal by Ms. Wertz, and I think she's here tonight, is for a change on required lot width that would be tied to the average of the width of the properties on an individual block. The communication was read to the council at the meeting, the mayor referred the matter to the planning board for review and consideration, so I guess, at this point, the next step, I guess, in part, is a procedural one, I'm not sure how a resident does go about that, is it a planning board committee that gets set up, or...
Well, I think it was referred to us by the, by the mayor.
By the mayor.
The council, so now we have to investigate it.
Act on it, yeah.
So, I think, you know, we'll need to get some information together, and we'll assess it at our next meeting.
Some more work to do next, so hopefully for the next meeting, is going through the R1 zone, block by block, a lot of width averages, so we'll try to have that for you for the next meeting.
Okay, what I can do is, the R1 zone, several just look about each block, show the lot width existing, and cover the average of the block, or something of that nature, I'll just start getting into it, and look at each...
And you can send a picture of...
Kind of like a spreadsheet or something, or key to a map, something that...
Yeah, but a map as well, showing the R1 for all of us.
Oh, sure, sure, that's why, to look at the R1 zone, and I, I don't think in our R2 or R3, there's really an opportunity to look at averages, going in one direction or another, actually, the R1 offers an opportunity of examining that, the R1 zone, that's our larger, that's the larger slide, so...
Chikol, can we do a request in specific to the R1?
Oh, okay.
No, well, the request was, was really, how does one go about doing this? It really wasn't tied to a specific zone. I mean, the resident happens to live in R1, but, you know, I think it was more of a question of policy.
Did the mayor limit us to R1, or did he just say...
No, the mayor just...
He just quoted the request, but in looking at the lot sizes, he seemed that R1 was, there's more variation in lot size in the R1, from Mr. Chikol's point, than in the R2, 3, and then, of course, the 5 would be applicable, too.
We should take a, we should take a...
We'll start there, and then...
Because the map will be of the whole community.
Right.
Of the R1, he just wanted, I said, has the largest variety.
Yes.
So, we'll get that, and we'll start the next meeting.
So, are we going to get a copy of the resolution in our next topic?
Yes, we will have the copy of the resolution, it's not around, it's minutes from last meeting, minutes to this meeting.
I think the residents may also hear this.
We still, well, we have some public comment there, and some...
Is it appropriate to address the...
Can't see it, yeah. Over public comment now, so, you know, this is the part of the meeting where we would open for public comment, so please come up.
Um, hi, Melissa Wertz, 431 Ridgewood Avenue. So, it's really aimed at addressing any other future situations that we have in town, which there, there's not a lot of really matter, there's a substantial in the plot size, that we'll probably have the same issue with this one, but it's really also, are there anything we should be thinking about? We met with Mr. Cummings earlier, and he's doing all of the place, so he's done watching Montclair, and he's not actually a builder, he's a renovator, he's going to build one home, and he's one of the services he first go at. So, he's, they're looking everywhere, and, you know, that should be also be looking at building height, so even though 35 might be maximum, you know, a home on a street that's higher than, you know, 29, is that something we should also look at? So, it's really a question of, you know, should we kind of tighten up all of our rules as they relate to, you know, not old construction, but thinking about the potential of all new construction, let there be more of it, and particularly if we're not demo friendly.
And the, the one thing I just bring up with building height...
Sympathetic.
Or, by the way, I told you, the historic commission can be tighter or more restrictive in what gets, in the zoning criteria. You can have a proposal, and, which happened with 451 Ridgewood, they brought in a fully conforming zoning wise, the building envelope, the structure needed met the zoning criteria, and the commission denied it, because the house was, if folks have any kind of knowledge, remember this ranch house on 451 was very long, they followed that chain lot width, or, or structure on the lot, but then they went two and a half stories high, so it was a very long facade on Ridgewood Avenue, and then even though it met the zoning criteria, the historic commission, when they look at that street skate that I mentioned, where they like to see the pattern of development down the street, felt that that stuck out, and they are allowed to reduce that mass of volume to bring it in to, into the development pattern that exists on the street, so...
So, they can, in effect, produce a smaller property than one other?
Correct, and that's why, in the past, when we looked at height, there's times where it's appropriate to be tall and skinny. I bring up the example on, Hamel, Douglas, and Christine's first house.
Oh, good to hear.
Douglas and Marsden, has this very long turret on the corner, it's very, very tall, and if you measured it by our code, it would be nearing the maximum height, but if you look at that, that's appropriate for that positioning of the house and its location. So, in the past, when we looked at the bulk, not necessarily the point that's brought, because we're looking at the lot size, but bulk or the matching criteria, having the commission work, you know, being able to kind of give them an envelope to work in, and to make, to track that house where it's appropriate on that block, especially in an historic town that doesn't have one specific type of home, this isn't like Charleston, where everything's, you know, the town's historic, but it's the same kind of development pattern. We have a rich variety of historic structure in the building, some are long, long and flat, some are steep, so if we reduce that, and some may be adversely affecting their ability to get a home to, to the right, right matching for that street. So, again, they do have the ability, even though somebody could fill that whole envelope, that dash envelope on that, on that block, they have the ability, you know, that's, if you look, if you want to shoot 20 feet on one side, 10 on the other, about, you know, 30 feet to the peak of the group, something of that nature, and that's why I say it's not a easy, or a quick, it's a, it's a large amount of information they want to see, and so for somebody to turn that around rapidly, it is very challenging.
I have a question for, for all of us, is that, you know, since this is new, and, and our neighbors are here, and, you know, I've been involved in real estate all my life, just about, you know, JP Morgan for Congress, and, you know, I, it, and what I've seen around the country, and a lot of the people brought up some of the issues, the first thing we always look at is, is how solid is, is the person developing these spec homes, you know, you know, are they going to be around? Are they going to ever be completed? Because I've been around the country, and even in New York City, and New Jersey, where, you know, you get a developer come in, and he doesn't meet the specs, and the homes never get built, and then you have these, these lots that are partially built, or, you know, and we got to be really concerned, so the question I have for the planning board is, can we have a resolution saying, you know, send a statement to the other departments in our town, saying that I think we should look at the depth of, of these builders that are coming in our town, to see whether or not they should really be building in our town? Do they, do they have the financial capabilities and the...
But how do you, you can't do that, there's no legislation.
No, 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 you could, you can make a statement. I think we can have a statement coming from the planning board, saying, hey, listen, we're concerned about, you know, because this doesn't happen every day, as we, as we talked about in the last meeting, with the once or twice over the last 30 years, you know, so, this is all new ground, and I can tell you, around the country, even in New Jersey, I've seen developers, construction companies go upside down, and then the property goes undeveloped for, for years because of problems.
If we were a corporation, yeah, we could pre-qualify, we could limit anything, but as a municipality, I don't know if you could pre-qualify, you're doing work in the past?
Even just the, or contracts and bids, they're limiting some of the financial... Even just the award contract and bids, uh, they're limiting some of the financial information bidders have to supply municipalities, so, because there's a host of issues, fifth, one, I don't know of any statute that would allow us to do it, two, people are hesitant to supply information, because they're all the old, they're all the, have access to public, so competitors would have access to all your financial information, so I'm not sure, we could have a statement, however, I don't know what effect it would have, because I don't know how we could implement it, because there is, correct, I don't know, uh, there's no statute on the books that requires developers to supply financials, in fact, they're limiting financials we could receive from bidders on public projects, so, um, I mean, we could make any type of statement, but it would be, I wouldn't know with the other departments, what it would mean to them, and how they could implement it, because we would have no guidance on that, uh, from the state, and I don't think the state statutes would allow, like, say, a building department to have, uh, financials, or, I mean, the best thing is if you, if you had developers have performance bonds now, visiting, we have development, if we have large developments, if we have commercial developments, then we could have performance bonds, so, then, then we get into a whole different situation. One and two family homes, it's a different animal, get into a major subdivision, get into, what, what we did, we had, we haven't had many single family subdivisions, but we did have the condominiums, uh, the Reserve, Mathis Metal, we had, uh, Glenmont Square, uh, we had the professional buildings, and those we do have, to protect the public, we do have performance bonds, and then after that, we could even require maintenance bonds. Single family home, there we don't have that, and the statutes allow us, for the major developments, to have that kind of security, so, it's something that we really can't require, and I don't believe any developer would submit it to us on your own.
I mean, that was my comment, too, I mean, this is a two million dollar plus project, the guys who have invested, um, it's a tremendous financial risk for him, uh, in our conversations with him, it wasn't clear, after, or, et cetera, but I, definitely my idea, too, that it reaches a certain level, that performance bond, or something like that should be required.
And this is not at that level, but in the large scale developments, we would...
But we could always, uh, make a statement, in saying that we, we support the community, and, and...
I mean, yeah, that kind of statement should really go to the legislature and to the governor, that would be changing statute, so that would be a resolution.
Absolutely, but I, I can tell you, I've seen property of, in, all over New Jersey, and I've, I've investigated them on, on behalf of, of, uh, the government.
I understand, because I'm just worried about implementing it.
And I, I love Ridgewood, and I, you know, I hate to see, you know, a project that be held up for, for years, and...
Yeah, I think we would all hate to see that, but I think to, to produce a statement like that as a, a public body, it may not be the right way to go.
But it, it, I'm just trying to say, this is the spirit of what we're trying to, I, I know, you know, a lot of the stuff we, we say, uh, uh, you know, uh, in a, in a city government, in a town government, you know, is, you know, you can't do much about it, but we could send a message out, and that, you know, I, I think we all believe that, you know, anyone that does business in our town should be, you know, have the capabilities and, and financial depth, and I, I mean, I, you know, I, I signed that statement, but, you know, I know...
You're right, I mean, I'm just trying to follow...
It's, 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 it's the spirit of, you know, it's just that, you know, that's what the, the people on Ridgewood in the section want, you know, and, and, and I, I'd be more than happy to put my name to it.
Well, what, what effect, I'm, I'm trying to understand...
What, what effect?
I mean, if, if, if somebody comes in with a building permit application, and, and files plans that comply, and, and he's entitled to a permit, and he's a licensed contractor, um, I don't believe there's anything that the town can, can, can require before giving that person a permit.
As long as it is, that building is...
A, a single family house, on a large project, like Mike said, the state statute allows for, you know, uh, you to require performance bond to make sure all necessary, um, improvements are...
So is that, nothing we could do to help, uh, secure the...
No, the only thing we can do is we have talent, the construction inspectors, and they are the only eyes and ears who can make sure that the contractors are doing work as per the code.
I mean, you can go, can you go to the HPC and express your views about how you feel about this project, if you want, and, I don't know if financial qualifications are within their purview, but...
I don't think any, any of us...
Well, I suppose we can do a little, sort of question, that's...
But that, that's, that's what I would suggest.
Yeah.
Or to the town council.
Do we have any more to a public comment? Please come up, but... No, she, well, there's, there was...
Uh, just coffee, yes, so the, uh, parameters changed, and that, that's not dead and too strong, um, that's, that's, the nation's being opportunity to, like, make it the way they want to look, but wouldn't it be better to have a heater, but then, it's, there are a lot of things the HCC's not thought, well, it's just won't look that, but it's a little bit different to then get a variance review. Because the HCC, from what I understand, I'm not even really clear on what the HCC is, it's just an advisory committee?
Yeah, they're, they're...
They're not.
No, they are absolutely...
But, I mean, do, do they take public comments, like you, or like...
Yes, yes.
Okay, but then we're not notified that these things are happening on a regular basis?
We'll get notification if you are within that two hundred feet of the house.
So just on a regular basis?
No, for, for somebody doing it to addition to their single family home, that, there's no notice.
Right, so if you originally were qualified, because you didn't even know they were on the HCC, because the original...
So, so...
Like, the, the top, like, there is no idea, because there's no, unless I went and looked at everybody's net, oh, yeah, this house is coming out, and that's, there's nothing that, 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 you live across the street or next door, that you're notified, so there's no way for the, the C C to let us know, because, again, it's just really not very clear. But the one thing about the percentage of the lot built, that's most notable, was when he told us what the original lot percentage was for that house, it was like really tiny, like, three, four percent of the lot, and now it's bodying in two, and it's going to be twenty percent. Twenty, 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 yeah, twenty, twenty, so that really changed the landscape, because the HCC does really have that, those parameters, because...
Yes, they can, they have, and that's what I was describing, they can neck down the size of that structure.
They can neck down, but they have to discuss it into the vote on themselves, not like a, a law or rule, so, I don't know, I think they have that much power, because it's just dependent on those five architectures, whoever's on that board, you have to get them guided, too, like, it's really, it's not a law.
But like, you know, like, as Mr. Kelly just explained, they're also guided by the zoning laws, and, and if they have, you know, the thirty-five foot height, for instance, they can actually tell them, well, you can't go within it with a third, because of the mass, that's what he was trying to explain.
I think in some sense, they have more power than we do.
They do have a lot more power.
Yeah.
But that's just part of the decision, it's hard to stand...
Yeah, well, I think you're, as to the knowledge, you're right.
And she would have to, yeah, so, she would know.
I know it takes a long time, but I also know that they can't say no to a proposition, if you're just law, isn't that right? You can't say no, because that won't happen, even if it's the HCC, so there's no, if you...
So like, their job is, if, if it is demolished, then whatever is built has to have same characteristics as the house on the adjacent properties.
Right, so the only way they can't help it is if what's going to be built doesn't correspond, so you have to, or have a way to do it? But under the law, they really don't have...
Well, you're right, it's very hard ultimately for, and, and, I mean, I mean, everyone has personal property rights, I mean, they own the property, and if somebody wants to, hey, I've demolished my house, I don't want to have open space, you know, why shouldn't they be allowed to do that? Your house, mine house, anybody's house, um, so it is, it, it's very hard ultimately to deny the demolition.
So I guess I just want them to be, or opt to be a little bit more conservative in what we let you build, and I don't know if the percentage of lot bills can come into play, when you look at a neighborhood or a lot, but, so I asked, they only have ten percent, they have ten percent, they have eight, if there's a way to put something, again, in that average category, but I know you don't wanna put out too many limits, because people wanna add on to their property.
But, you know, as we go back and look at the zoning, we'll, we'll all talk about that, and it'll be an open meeting, you're welcome to come and participate.
Sure, because everybody's talking about process, the process really is that the planning board will make a recommendation to council, any change in the zoning ordinance, the zoning code requires an ordinance change, which would be two public meetings, an introduction, it would be advertised, then there would be a public hearing and a second vote, so, it's a long process, and there's, and then, and we post all our ordinances on our webpage, so that you...
Right, but we have the email.
Yes, you get, it's also email, so, but it's a longer process, the change of zoning ordinance, probably a couple meetings of the planning board, then it goes to the council, and then the council would have to decide to put it under agenda, and it would take two council meetings to change it.
This is a long...
It's, it's, that'd be two, three months, at the minimum.
Just a quick comment, after that, I've had a topic for, for Richmond, we're just looking for some more support, and so when you're looking at this for the future, and then, uh, we want you to look at, but we don't feel like we had any say, or have very little say, or very little support, our shock would be that every neighborhood is treated as a whole in Glen Ridge, and not what your neighbors look like, you know, the eighty-five foot frontage was for the entire town, it wasn't based on, you know, what the original plan was, to cut off the side and have eighty-five foot frontage, it could be a house on Carter Street, it could be a house on Bishop, it didn't matter, and we're kind of looking for a...
That's not correct.
Oh, I'm sorry, it's in our...
There's four different, if we are one...
Yeah, the side streets in the R1 zone, which the houses are automatically close together, versus Har...
And I think that's where we had spoke about the analysis, that Mr. Sheil and I go lot by lot, block, 'cause in some areas on Ridgewood, eighty-five feet is appropriate, in other areas...
Yes, right, so I really look for the block, but we're really looking for you to look at all the data, and we're looking for more support, I actually be wanting to restore commission some more play, but we think it's too much, we're looking for laws and things that help us prevent it, because we see now, if you can just demolish, more developers are gonna come in, we, we just know that's happening, as soon as one gets demolished, as soon as this gets voted in, and they see this happen, they're gonna be coming in, so we want the support.
But, I just need your comment, I mean, nothing the planning board has done has any effect on people being able to demolish houses.
No, but you can affect the future of what they're building, we're asking, if you make it so that they can't build a five thousand square foot home, if we're being told that is the plan, but the two houses on that lot, if you're gonna affect that, it's going to make sure that that's what's gonna happen, our neighbors are gonna see how our neighbors look. We're just looking for support here, and that's the one key, you got it in that. Thank you.
Thanks, thank you. Any more public comment?
Sorry, I have another, another question or comment, um, the applicant doesn't actually own the property at this point.
Yeah.
So should, some of our conditions, and I apologize, I should have brought this up when we were going through our resolutions, but, I mean, isn't it also conditioned on him actually owning the property, and at what point, and, or, so he's applying for all this as, as, as an applicant, but, so...
Your approval really goes with the land, you're not getting approval to this person, um, and he has the right as, as a person under contract...
Under contract, okay.
He, on the lot, has the right to make the application, um, has to have the owner's consent, which he does, um, but, you know, a land use approval is really an approval that, from the, the land, not attached to a particular...
So you can transfer that?
Yes. So...
Thank you, it's not easy for us, money to review, still asking to buy one, if we can draft, set up, the housing department, if we can, if we can, a lot of coverage, five blocks, first heat, we're thinking, when we work on the drainage, the box, maybe the lot, it, it, it was the son of a lot of that box, that happened, the height, we've been brought back into our base, so if you could look at that, perhaps we can still save the two homes that were wanting to stay, and perhaps we can, because it's going to take a long time, but maybe we can save a couple others, and at least tighten up restrictions, so that it cannot, uh, continue to learn on the block, and we have to, we don't love, and we have to...
So, Mike, you and, you guys are gonna look into some of the data about this?
Mm-hmm, correct.
And whatever decisions and considerations we have, they have an open meeting?
Well, it's gonna be an open meeting, we can discuss this, like...
So to, I would just say to the members of the public who have interest, be specific with proposals and information, I mean, it's one thing to say, could you please help us out here, it's another to be concrete about things you'd like us to consider.
How should we do that? What would you suggest? We can't be hired, we can't, we can't write you, you know, no, no, no.
Hold on, I have a, I have a, I have a sun application. Listen, listen to what I'm talking about, and, and come to the public, you know, the public, uh, speaking portion, and comment.
Alan, can I just clarify something, if, unless I'm wrong?